Appropriations Ordinance 21-19. Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Mayor.
Smith, or Welch.
I will motion to approve the Appropriations Ordinance 21-19.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and second by Mr. Smith. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five zero. City requested appearances. Jabara Airport is updating their airport layout plan as required by the FAA. Since Bel Air borders the airport property and airport airspaces over parts of Bel Air, it is important that area municipalities are included in the study as well as planned. Airport engineer and planning manager John Oswald is here to discuss the plan. Mr. Oswald.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Appreciate the invitation to visit with you tonight. Actually, I'm going to introduce the presenter, and I will be short in order to save time for him. As introduced, I'm John Oswald, Airport Engineering and Planning Manager for the Airport Authority/City Wichita. The presentation night will be focusing on the Jabara Airport Airport Layout Plan, which is a plan that the FAA requires us to do at certain intervals. And Patrick Taylor is with me and will represent in a moment. Patrick is the project manager for Kaufman Associates, a firm specializing in airport planning around the country, based in Overland Park, Kansas. So Patrick, I think it's your turn. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Like John said, Patrick Taylor with Kaufman Associates. So we're a national airport planning firm in Overland Park, Kansas. John said I had about forty-five minutes for this presentation?
No, it was just five.
We'll go quick then. Thanks for the time. So just to describe what the project is, so periodically, the FAA requires that certain airports, including Jabara, update their long-range planning documents. Typically, that's either a master plan or an airport layout plan and narrative report. That's what we're doing here. We're following FAA guidelines to do this study. And any project for which the airport would seek federal grant funding, typically pavement projects, has to be depicted on this airport layout plan. So it's an important document for them in terms of capital improvements at the airport. This particular study, we've kind of added a few extra elements, including a land use compatibility analysis. And as John mentioned, the airspace for the airport actually comes over the city of Bel Air. So that's an important consideration for this group. At the bottom is the project website that is active. All of the draft documents are available to anybody in the public or you all, if you'd like to get any of the graphics that you see here. So the study process, each one of those rectangles represents essentially a chapter in the plan. We've had an inventory element, a forecasting element, so projecting future activity at the airport. We've translated that into facility requirements, whether it's the runway or hangar needs in the future. And then we've done the land use compatibility planning, as well as put together a twenty-year capital improvement program tied to those forecasts and those facility requirements. And then we've also done the airport layout plan. This is a set of technical drawings that would go to the FAA for their approval. They also approved the forecasts early in the process. So those are the two pieces that the FAA actually approves. We've had a public element as well, including a public information workshop at the WSU campus right next to the airport. And we're here today, of course, and we've had some other meetings as well. In case you didn't know, Jabara is a pretty important airport in the Kansas aviation system. It has the sixth highest total economic output of all the general aviation airports in the state. That's about eighty or ninety different airports. It has a really critical economic impact, not just to the city of Wichita, but of course here, you know, being a neighbor to the airport. I'm certain there are people that work there that live in Bel Air, so I always like to emphasize that. So this is the plan, just kind of the highlights. There is no planned long-range change to the runway system itself. The runway would remain at about six thousand feet. The red element in this picture is new pavement, so taxiway elements or apron, ramp, tarmac elements. Yellow is a depiction of a hangar building, although there's nothing that ties them to this particular layout. And then the blue is any roadways or parking. So this is a depiction of the plan. You can see there's a new parallel taxiway planned. There's also a taxiway here that's planned to extend across what was Forty-third Street. So right now, the city is in the process of considering closing Forty-third Street at that location for a number of reasons. One is a safety reason, which is it goes through this runway protection zone, this trapezoidal area off the end of the runway. And when possible, you don't want roads or any kind of public facilities within those runway protection zones. So there is an opportunity here to close the road and then kind of expand the areas where aviation development can happen by extending a taxiway in this direction. We've also identified a parcel of property on this side, which the airport does not currently own, but they may have an interest in the future to protect the potential to develop additional facilities in the long term on the east side of the airport. This is the exact same plan, except without all the hangers. So this is what's actually depicted on the airport layout plan, because the need for hangers is really fluid and it's driven by private development interests. So just because we happen to show a hangar that's, you know, a hundred by a hundred, a developer may come in and want a hundred and twenty by a hundred and twenty. So really, the reason why we show those hangers initially is just so that we understand the design standards and the separation standards for the taxiways that lead to them. But there's a lot of development opportunities still remaining on the west side of the airport and a lot of future development remaining on the east side of the airport. This is that twenty-year capital improvement program that I mentioned earlier. So there's short-term projects, years one through five. The red projects are years six through eleven, six through ten, and then long-term projects, years eleven through twenty. So these are kind of the ideal scenario. Every one of these would require FAA grant funding assistance. That's not always available. Some of these projects would need to be justified by activity levels that would track with the forecasts. So that doesn't always happen. And there are limited funds available from the FAA for airports like this. In fact, that number is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, unless you can justify a project that would be eligible for discretionary funding. So that's usually a larger kind of reconstruction, runway reconstruction project, something like that. But they do have a plan, and it's a long-term vision for the airport. It's going to remain in the same footprint. The airspace actually remains the same as well. So there's no real major changes. They're just kind of preparing for the future with their capital improvement program to maintain the airport and to allow it to grow. There are certain grant assurances that all airports like Jabara have to follow. There are thirty-nine of them, and they provide requirements for operations, management, and implementing airport improvement program-funded projects. So when they accept a grant from the FAA, they have to meet these thirty-nine grant assurances. If they don't, the square on the right, then they can lose future grant funds. And in fact, it could be so extreme that they lose current funds for other projects. So meeting their grant assurance is important when they accept a grant from the FAA. There are two specific ones I wanted to mention to this group, because they relate to land use and airspace around the airport, part of which goes over the city of Bel Air. So the airport sponsor, that's the Wichita Airport Authority and the city of Wichita, must protect the terminal airspace, and I'm going to show you a picture of what that is here in a moment, by removing, lowering, relocating, marking, lighting, or otherwise mitigating existing hazards and preventing future ones. So there's several bullet points here, but what the airport sponsor must do, and I bolded the one that kind of relates to this group, is they must advise neighboring jurisdictions with zoning and permitting authority of the requirements of Part 77, so that term relates to the airspace around the airport, when they're considering approval or construction that could create a hazard. So the responsibility of the Wichita Airport Authority, city of Wichita, is to inform you all, since you all have the permitting and zoning jurisdiction for the city of Bel Air and the city of Wichita does not. So that's what they're doing here tonight. So the sponsor's obligation, as I just said, is to inform interests, including the jurisdictions, with zoning and permitting authority of the requirements of Part 77. So let me talk a little bit about those. This is a map depicting those Part 77 surfaces. Maybe some of you have seen this before, but it's essentially this oval shape with a fan that is the approach to the primary runway end. This is that Part 77 map converted, and is how the city of Wichita and Sedgwick County has adopted height and hazard zoning related to that map. So you can see, whoops, we have this shape. And roughly what the city of Wichita has done, which is right here, is apply that in this grid pattern so that they're getting notified when certain projects are above a certain elevation. And so the reds are above twenty-five feet, the Bs are fifty, I can't see quite well in this, I'm sorry, the yellows are fifty and the Cs are about seventy-five feet. So that is how the city of Wichita and the county are protecting the airspace around the airports in the county. So this is that same Part 77 drawing. We've just highlighted the city of Bel Air and Wichita and the county. So you all can see that a portion of that Part 77 airspace that the airport is obligated to inform you about and to inform you how they protect the airspace goes over the city. And then the other grant assurance is land use compatibility. Again, the sponsor must, to the extent reasonable, restrict land uses near the airport to those that are compatible with the airport. And again, there's several bullet points here, but I've highlighted the ones that would apply to the city here. If another entity has jurisdiction, as the city of Bel Air does, encourage that jurisdiction to adopt zoning regulations and building codes that would prevent incompatible land uses. So just a short list of incompatible land uses might be churches, schools, hospitals, typically noise-sensitive things in proximity to the airport. And again, their obligation is to inform the jurisdictions when incompatible land uses are proposed and encourage them not to support those. So what sponsor actions are prohibited? The sponsors, so that's again the Wichita Airport Authority, the city of Wichita. The sponsor's obligation with respect to property that it does not own, so obviously the city of Bel Air, is to encourage the city of Bel Air to adopt zoning and permitting authority so that they can protect the airport from incompatible land uses and encroachment that would limit the airport from performing its economic function into the future. So one other thing that jumped out in the study is the existing zoning for the airport. You all may not be aware, but this little square up here is zoned agriculture. And it's in the city of Bel Air, but it's actually airport property. And then there's actually a couple of other parcels that are in the city of Wichita on the airport that are zoned for low-density residential. So that obviously doesn't make much sense for an airport to have homes on the airport. So one of the recommendations from the study for the city of Wichita is to change that zoning on the airport to what it actually is, which is a limited industrial use. And I think that would be something wise to do with that agricultural parcel that's also in the city of Bel Air. So this is the summary. There's kind of three main bullet points I think we want to kind of communicate to this body. So the Wichita Airport Authority, the city of Wichita, is meeting their obligation of informing this group about the presence of the airspace and the airport and their obligation to inform you that there's this economic tool, the airport, that has these Part 77 surfaces, and it would be beneficial to protect those from encroachment that would be injurious to the airport. So I guess the Wichita Airport Authority is looking to partner with Bel Air to protect the airport from possible obstructions or incompatible land uses by encouraging and supporting adoption of height and hazard zoning. So there is height and hazard zoning. I showed you that grid from the city of Wichita. That would be one method. Probably the easiest method to protect the airspace would be to adopt something like that, but it doesn't have to be that. It could be something else related to those Part 77 surfaces. And then ultimately, Wichita Airport Authority would like the city of Bel Air to rezone the airport parcel to light industrial or commercial. That's not actually that critical, since the airport owns the parcel, so they're obviously not going to let something be built on there, but it would clean up the map a little bit. So that's kind of the study. We're just about done, and I'm happy to take any questions that you all may have.
Mr. Mayor.
Just a question that I have is, do we not currently have appropriate zoning for these areas? Because, I mean, this is not new. This airport's been here for a long time.
No, there's no zoning to protect the airspace right now in the Bel Air zoning ordinances. That was what our research found, yeah.
I see. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Mr. Smith.
The zoning change that's suggested as a recommendation up there, that would be something that the Wichita Airport Authority would apply for through the Planning Commission, and that would go through a typical zoning process change. Is that correct?
Correct. If Wichita Airport Authority is the owner, they would need to apply.
Okay. Is that right? Would you have to apply for them to change their zoning? The applicant.
Now, if I may interrupt, there's also an alternative where the city reviews the zoning map once a year and makes recommendations to council for little cleanup areas. It could be considered at that time as well. So that would be another avenue to make minor changes.
Thank you for that input. I would like to ask our city attorney to please get a hold of this information and work through the request and maybe work with Planning Commission and come up with a recommendation for this. Okay?
Yes, we will.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Has this been presented to our Planning Commission?
So we had a meeting with Ty and several other folks that presented essentially the same thing. So where it went from there, I'm not exactly sure, but I think I provided the PowerPoint.
No, we haven't presented that to Planning Commission or anything after our meeting. And as the mayor mentioned, you know, us not addressing anything airport-wise in our codes, I thought it might be a good idea to look at that. And so I asked them to come and present it to you and make sure that the governing body was on board. And if you are, then, as the mayor has requested, we'll start working with them in greater detail of, you know, what we might want to consider in our code updates.
Very good. Any other questions?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor. So no plans to accommodate regular seven-four-seven traffic?
Once in a blue moon, I think. No, it'll stay at General Aviation Reliever Airport, no commercial services plan.
But special mission seven-four-seven is okay, like the Dream Lifter?
Right. I knew what you're referring to. Yeah, I think some people got in trouble for that.
Yeah. Okay.
Good.
Very good. Well, thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation.
Sure. Thanks for your time.
Next, move on to item ten on the agenda, citizens' concerns. Are there any citizens that wish to address council this evening? Hearing none, we'll move on to reports. Start with council member reports. Ms. Diane Nguyen, would you like to start, please? Thank you. Mr. Welch.
I have no report.
Mr. Smith.
I also have no report.
Mr. Elsa.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I guess I have an informal report. Two things. So my daughter's soccer team had a couple of games on Saturday right before, or at the beginning of the Fall Festival. So there was a lot of people out there for a lot of different soccer games and activities out there. And then with the festival going on, the rec center appeared to be at max capacity. It was definitely full, and we had perfect weather. It was nice and cool out there. So it was really great to see just so many people in the community out there. And secondly, I finally took my family to Los Cunados, our Mexican restaurant. So we've been there three Sundays in a row. It's my kid's new favorite, and so I think we'll continue to go there. It's excellent Mexican food. So that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Dr. Schroder.
I also attended the Fall Festival, I think most all of us did, and had a wonderful time and appreciate all the work that we ended up putting that together.
Thank you. Mayor's report. So I attended the K-254 corridor development meeting on October fifteenth in Eldredo. KTA engineer Glenn Scott gave a presentation on current and upcoming Kansas turnpike projects. He confirmed something that my dad told me years ago. All two hundred and thirty-six miles of turnpike were built in twenty-two months back in nineteen fifty-four. Wish we knew the trick. It takes a long time to seem to build roads nowadays. The turnpike handles twelve percent of Kansas economy. There are no taxpayer funds for this road. It is fully funded by tolls. Turnpike is moving towards open tolling, meaning there are no toll booths for any transactions. The interchange at Kellogg will have this. If you don't have a K tag, you will get a bill in the mail. It will take years for all the tolls to be this way, but KTA is moving towards open tolling. And I was excited to learn from Mr. Lasher that we have about one hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars in commitments to encourage KDOT to develop the K-254 management plan in 2022. The association got commitments from Butler County, Cedric County, the city of Wichita, the city of Eldredo, the city of Kichai, and the city of Bel Air. So it's very promising that sometime late in 2022, there should be a management plan to guide future developments along K-254. I also attended the Fall Fest on Saturday, as others have mentioned here. Great turnout. Big thank you to the staff for all the work they put into getting this together. In case one hasn't noticed, there is an election coming up on November second. It's not too late to apply for mail-in ballots. The deadline is October twenty-sixth. So early voting starts here in City Hall on the twenty-eighth at ten a.m. and ends on October thirtieth at four p.m. Of course, if you prefer, you can still vote at your resigned polling location on November second. Depending on where you live, that will be Bel Air Rec Center or Bel Air City Hall. Last election, a council seat was decided by one vote, so your vote does count. A candidate forum is being sponsored by the Bel Air Chamber of Commerce on October twenty-first. That's this Thursday at seven p.m. here at the City Hall. And they're a good opportunity to ask questions of candidates for their views on issues important to you. Last meeting, I also reported that Vietnam Moving Wall is coming to Valley Center. Moving Wall is a house-sized replica of Washington, D.C. Vietnam Veterans Memorial and has been touring the country for thirty years. The wall contains names of over fifty-eight thousand people who lost their lives from the Vietnam War. The Moving Wall will be making its return to Lions Park in Valley Center on October twenty-one through twenty-five, 2021. On October twenty-sixth, at six p.m., Bel Air is holding an open forum on the issue of mayor terms and term limits. All citizens are encouraged to attend and provide their input on these ideas. There is feedback forum available on the Bel Air website. KDHE website now reports fifty-two point six percent of Kansas vaccinated against COVID. That's another point eight percent increase in the last two weeks. Sevi County is reporting infection rate at six point four percent as of yesterday, and that is the lowest it's been since July eighteenth. So the current wave is clearly subsiding. Please continue to be safe, wash hands often, practice six-foot distancing, and wear a mask if you've not been vaccinated. Let's continue to support each other. I'll now ask our city attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Updating you on a couple of items, one being that Planning Commission had a meeting last week and several residents from Iron Gate came out to request that Planning Commission deny the zoning of Chapel Landing Fifth. It's currently zoned R four. The request was to rezone it to R five. Planning Commission decided to table the rezoning to give the developer a chance to consider some other options related to the golden factors that they had to consider. So that rezone won't be coming before you, in case you hear from the public yet. But once Planning Commission makes their final recommendation, the decision will come to council, and those residents are very interested in how council decides to handle that rezone. And you may actually see a totally different map or plan than what Planning Commission saw, but wanted to make council aware of that. Another important item is that redistricting is going on. The county has released, Cedric County has released some proposed maps for redistricting the county. And the statute requires that districts be numerically equal in population, that be the priority, and that they be compact and contiguous. And other factors, considering voting preferences or financial preferences or racial preferences, be not considered. So the county has put together some maps through GIS for the public to weigh in on. Those are for county seats. And at this point, there is no date to vote on those redistricting seats, but people can weigh in, and from what we understand, the county should decide sometime before the end of the year or near the end of the year or the beginning of the year, so later on in the year. But those maps are on the county website. At the state level, redistricting is going on as well, and they're actually, state legislatures have gone on a listening tour to get public input on districting, and that was done in August. So any input at this point is still possibly being considered, but it's certainly not a part of that public comment process. And they anticipate, they have to consider the same factors. Districts have to be generally equal with, give or take, five percent in size, compact, et cetera. So they're all under the same standards. And also, Congress at the federal level is also considering the same matter. So I wanted to make you aware of that.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
I wasn't clear, but we've got three districts in Bel Air. Are they able to split those districts for commissioners? Seats, county seats?
So county seats, Bel Air is entirely under one. Bel Air falls under District One for the county.
Okay, but if it was rezoned somehow, would they be able to split the middle of a city district?
Yes, they can split the middle of the city, but from my understanding, the county tries not to. They try not to split those seats. However, so there's a layer of the county's districts, and then there's the state districts, and those are the ones that cannot, those precincts cannot be split by the county. So there's kind of two layers going on.
Thank you.
Just to clarify, the county map is just what the county is proposing for county seats?
Correct.
Okay, so there's still the House seat and Senate seat to be decided at the state level?
Correct, and the federal House congressional seats.
And Bel Air actually is in two Kansas House seats and two Senate seats right now. And that was done ten years ago. And I think we've talked about maybe putting a resolution together to bring Bel Air back together as one House district and Senate district.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Very good. Move on. Any other questions? Don't want to cut that off. Okay, we'll move on to city manager report.
Thank you, Mayor. Police Department is investigating a number of thieves that are targeting vehicles in our residential areas. If you follow the Police Department on Facebook or Twitter, they've actually been posting some of those videos. Some of them are pretty clear. So they're asking to citizens to look at those if they recognize anybody or if they've heard of anything with these thefts going on, to please let them know. It's important to note, and you can see in the videos, that what they're doing is simply going along, checking to see if doors are open. And if they're open, then they will look through what's in there and take anything of value, and then they'll move on. So it's not like they're breaking windows or anything. So it's just important for our citizens to know that even though we're a safe community, it's important to lock your car doors, even if it's sitting out in the driveway, because you can see the videos. They just go through, open them, and then look around and move on. So if the door's locked, they just keep going. So if anybody, again, if it's in your driveway even, lock your doors. If you hear or see anything, please call nine-one-one or let the police know. But they are investigating those. There's been a few different areas that have been, neighborhoods have been targeted. Couple of things happening this Saturday. The curbside cleanup, citywide curbside cleanup is Saturday. So they're encouraging everybody to get your trash out to the curb prior to seven. So it's good, maybe the night before, Friday night, to get it out there. They're saying, they're asking to not use your trash or recycle carts. It's just to pick up trash and boxes or limbs or whatever. So they're not emptying trash cans. They're just emptying boxes and things. They're asking that the items be able to be handled by one or two people, so not really heavy items that would take three or four, because they don't have, you know, they usually have one driver. And there are large items that they're accepting, such as furniture or chairs, couches, appliances, tree limbs that are cut and bundled to three foot. They'll take refrigerators, freezers, and air conditioners if they're tagged by a technician and the freon was removed from them. Of course, no construction material or hazardous liquids are allowed. So that's this weekend. The other thing that's happening on Saturday is, the Police Department is holding their DEEA drug takeback, and that's from ten to two. and that's from 10:00 to 2:00. So if anybody's got medicine that they need to get rid of, we don't want those medications flushed down the toilet or put down the drains, because that ends up in our water stream somewhere. So people can just swing by, have a tent, just give it to them, and they'll dispose of it, the medicine properly. So that was all I had, Mayor.
Thank you. Move on to item seven, consideration of resolution authorizing, offering sale of general obligation bonds. So our special meeting last Tuesday, council voted to move forward with the Woodlawn expansion and accepting the low bid requiring a payment to KDOT being made by the city's portion next month. Additional funds are needed, which are being financed through this bond. Kevin Cowan with Gilmore and Bell is here to explain the action and answer any questions.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I think we talked about this a little bit last week, but the step last week was to authorize the issuance of bonds. And certain steps have to be taken, and you recite your statutory authority to do that. So for the last week, the city has been authorized to issue the bonds, but hasn't acted on that authorization, and this is the first step in acting on that authorization. This resolution would call for the sale of those bonds and set the sale date as November 16th. On which date, as is typical for the city's bond sales, you would accept bids and accept the low bid, the best bid, which is the lowest net interest cost to the city. So that is really all I had in terms of formal comments. Would be happy to address any questions. Let me back up. I did want to follow up on one question that Councilmember Smith had last week about can we combine into a single issue? The answer is we can. The restriction that the city has is the notes that were sold last year that included a piece for the Woodlawn project, so this time last year. Those are not callable for redemption at the city's option until next year, this time. So you could issue bonds to permanently finance that, but you have to escrow that money for a year, essentially, until you can actually take those notes out of circulation. And so we had some discussions with the city's financial advisor, and it's probably cost prohibitive because you have a year. It would be very low interest, and the interest on those notes is 0.4%. But you'd have kind of this extra layer of interest for a year. You would try to invest the escrow in a way that could keep up with that, but probably not. So that's the cost. I mean, the reward would be, well, if we locked in the low interest rates, we don't have a crystal ball, next year the rates might be as low or lower. But that's, that would be, I think, the thought. If we wanted to do the permanent bonds now, it's because we're virtually certain interest rates are going to go up, and we're willing to have that little bit of additional cost for the year, extra interest cost for the year. So that's, I did want to address that, because we did follow up on that.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
That was exactly, you know, why I was asking the question, as it does feel like we've gotten really premium interest rates. And, you know, not only are the interest rates really good right now, but paying for the project with two separate bond issues that'll come off in, you know, two different years in the future feels a bit weird to me. So I really liked the idea of financing it all with one bond issue that, you know, took care of the project in a single set of bonds. I don't know if our CFO has an opinion on which way would be better to go there, given the temporary note status that we have at this point.
My preference right now would be to wait on the 1.8 that we currently have in temp notes. One, I don't know exactly the final cost of this project. We know what our portion for KDOT's portion, but there is other costs associated right now. We know of a majority of them, but I would rather bond for the exact amount instead of maybe, right now, we wouldn't have the exact amount. We would be guessing of some sort. Now, if the council wanted to do, you know, a million of that, I'm pretty sure, certain it'd be a million of it, but then we're back to the same problem. We're going to have a little bit extra. Everything I'm reading with our financial advisors, I don't know. I don't, again, I don't have a crystal ball, but I don't think we're going to see a huge spike in interest rates. So then it comes for, is it worth it? Which basket do you want to, you want to do, the little more cumbersome one, but we get a little better rate, or a little higher rate, but everything's pinned up nicely with a bow on it? Does that make sense? So to be clear, my suggestion would be to do the 2.5 now, and then the 1.8 later. Hopefully, 1.6, 1.5, but we're not sure yet.
That'd be great.
And I would add and follow up, I think it's a great thought if you can achieve some economies of scale and try to combine things. The good news or bad news, depending on how you look at it, is the city's a pretty regular issuer of bonds. And so it's not as if, you know, you issue bonds once every 10 years, and you're going to have this weird, suddenly we did these two issues that were just a year apart. Wouldn't it have been nice if we could have combined those into a single issue? And so you won't have that. I mean, there will be a bond issue that those notes can be a part of, because you have the special assessment projects in the future. And so at least know that. You do achieve some economies in that way.
Thank you. Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I'll make a motion to accept a resolution authorizing the offering for sale of general obligation bonds, Series 2021-C of the city of Bel Air, Kansas, and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Dr. Schroder. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item B, in 2021, budget was adopted by the Bel Air City Council on August 18th, 2020. Since then, city refinances existing land debt obligation and secured a low interest rate. Due to several land sale properties owned by the land bank, $1.6 million was used to pay down debt service principal. This Plan 2021 budget amendment will increase the land bank budgeted expenditures amounts from $430,000 to $2.111 million. The action tonight simply approves the budget amendment for publication and establishes a public hearing at our November 2nd council meeting. Financial Director Ted Henry is here to explain the budget amendment and answer any questions. I think we knew this was coming.
Yeah, I think we talked about this a while back. It should be, if you ever hear anything in the State House, trailer bill kind of to what we did earlier this year, which is a really good thing, is we paid down a lot of principles. So this simply increases the expenditure amount for the land bank budget that we budgeted for. If you think about it, it was probably June or July of 2020, which is a little different than what we experienced today. So this just simply increases that amount and allows us to end the year with the right numbers.
Yeah, we got the wrong graphic. I'm sorry. I didn't hear most of what Ted said, because I was looking at that graphic trying to figure out.
Any questions?
Yeah, like I said, I didn't hear most of what you said.
Okay, simply, this just simply increases the budget authority, the expense authority in the land bank, so that we, when we refinance the debt, we put $1.6 million on the principal of that debt through land sales. So that's all it does.
Okay, I'm still kind of confused on this, and I know we've talked about this several times. Where is this 1.6 million coming from?
From all the land sales we've had in the last about year.
So we refinanced, and then we sold this land, or we sold the land?
No, all the land was previous, previous to the refinancing. This is just the budget amendment that allows it.
I'm still confused. I'm sure a lot of other people are too, but so, yeah, I'm really confused. I don't even know how to ask the right question at this moment.
I think what's happened here is we approved this previously. This is just making the budget amendment to do, to agree with what we've already done.
Well, what are we, what are we amending in the budget? Who's budget? The city's budget or the land bank budget?
The city's budget, because the land bank falls under the city.
And we're budgeting that we can spend 1.6 million, or we're going to budget that we?
So we amended the budget so we can spend the $1.6 million that we spent in April to throw the money on to the principal.
Okay, so we've basically already done this, but we're just now doing the paperwork?
Exactly, like, so I could have done it in April, but it's better to do it for me at the end of the year, just in case there's unexpected other things if we needed to do it again.
Okay, I'm okay with that, but I thought we found another 1.6 million.
No, I wish, I wish. I'd be doing a cartwheel.
And I really had better plans for it than what?
Mr. Mayor. Almost, almost to approve a 2021 Land Bank Fund budget amendment to be published and schedule a public hearing for the November 2nd, 2021 city council meeting?
I'll second.
Motion and a second by Dr. Schroder, and a second by Mr. Smith, but I do have a question for our city attorney, possibly. This says Land Bank Fund, and it's on the city council agenda. Is that correct?
Because I believe the budget is overseen by the city council.
So the, so the whole city budget, one of the fund under the city budget is called the Land Bank Budget Fund. So that, we submit one, we don't submit two different documents to the state. We submit one state, and this falls under. It could say amend the city of Bel Air budget, but I wanted to be more transparent, so you say Land Bank Budget.
Very good. Thank you for the clarification. Any other questions or discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item C, the developer of Rock Springs is ready to move forward with water, sewer, and stormwater improvements for Rock Spring Fourth. The cost of these improvements will be financed through a bond, spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. Our city engineer, Ann Stevens, is here to explain the project, review bids, and answer any questions.
So as the mayor said, Rock Spring Fourth is getting ready to get kicked off with utility improvements. This is for water, sanitary sewer, and storm sewer. Rock Spring Fourth is not quite at the hard corner of 53rd and Webb. It's just a little bit south of 53rd and goes all the way west to match up with the Rock Spring Third development. The map is, should be in your packets. But we did have five bidders, and they're all good bidder, or four bidders, I'm sorry. All, or no, five, I just, wrong number in the report. They're all good contractors. McCullough was the low for $922,781. They were the only contractor that came in underneath the engineer's estimate. But they are a good contractor. We've worked with them multiple times before, and I have no concerns about their bid or their work.
Any questions for Ms. Stevens?
Mr. Mayor.
Dr. Schroder.
Almost to accept the bid from McCullough at the cost not to exceed $922,781 for the water, sanitary sewer, and stormwater improvements to serve Rock Springs Fourth Edition, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Schroder and a second by Mr. Welch. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. The developer, Skyview, at Block 49, is ready to move forward with street and paving. The cost of this improvement will be financed through a bond, spread as specials against the benefiting lots. City engineer Ann Stevens is here to explain this project and review bids and answer questions.
So once again, we have paving improvements. The water, sewer, and storm have already been constructed and are in place. The location is shown on the screen. There were five bidders. Kansas paving was the low bid. The developer did choose to only bid concrete on this project, so there will be concrete streets. We've worked with Kansas paving several times, and they've been a good contractor.
Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to accept a bid from Kansas paving in the amount not to exceed $644,796.70 for Phase One paving improvements to serve Skyview at Block 49, and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Mr. Welch. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. And item E, the developer is ready to move forward with paving for Phase Two for the Villas at Prestwick. The cost of this improvement will be financed through a bond and spread as special assessments against the benefiting lots. City engineer Ann Stevens is here, also to speak about this project. But I do have a question for you. The council approves the concrete, does the developer have to amend their application since it is over the estimate by $35,000?
I believe it is within the 1% creep of the petition, but the developer is here, along with their engineer, the design engineer. They do have, it was my recommendation to go with concrete. Concrete is typically a more durable product. It always kind of, council wrestles with the decision regarding cost. This one, we were about 16.8% difference, but the developer has looked at their specials with concrete versus asphalt, as well as the specials on Phase One versus Phase Two, and they would prefer going with the asphalt. They are here, and I believe would like to address the council if the council is amenable to that.
Certainly, yeah, please.
Good evening. Marvin Schalberg, I'm the developer out at the Villas. And I guess we're just asking if council would consider, I know you like to do concrete. And we just, as everybody's been fighting cost increases. I mean, there's been, construction-wise, we've had about $45,000 per building since pre-COVID versus today. We've been as diligent as we can. We've been buying in bulk and trying to, at certain times, and trying to do the best we can. We've seen about a 10% increase in residential construction, seen about a 14% to 16%. And so it's just something everybody's battling, but when I look at all of our different costs, I see one area that I can save something on, and it's going to be our specials, pavement, asphalt versus concrete. And so I guess I'm just asking if you'd consider going with asphalt instead of the concrete, just to help out with our monthly costs. You know, what we look at in ours, because they are rentals, we look at that monthly payment. And so those are just one of the things that we have to be very cognitive of, and we can price ourselves out of the market. We try to increase our rents to offset it, but we've had a lot of increases that we're looking at to offset. So, and I guess an answer to your question is, it does fall into that 1% creep as far as the petition.
What are the other streets in the Villas? Are they asphalt or concrete?
They are concrete. Phase One, we had good bids, you know? I mean, our monthly special assessments are estimated at $402 a month per building. Now their Phase Two would be about $480 a month per building if we go concrete, and $448 if we go asphalt. Questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
How many units are typically in a building?
Three doors per building.
Any other questions or discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
I think this is an interesting issue. A couple of things that I'm thinking about here. I certainly connect with the concern, and I want to make sure it's profitable to develop here in Bel Air. But what I'm also thinking about is kind of the consistency with the other parts of the development, and then trying to be consistent in how we apply the mental models as to whether we determine the concrete versus asphalt across our developments. And I feel like, you know, the typical rule that I've applied- I feel like that, you know, the typical rule that I've applied is if it's, you know, that that 30% mark is, I think, what is is typical in my head of uh especially anything significantly under 30%, the the total cost on that over the life of the surface is a real economic value for for the citizens here of Bel Air. And uh I guess going against that, you know, especially when it's clear down at 16%. I have a hard time kind of justifying doing the asphalt over the concrete as I I think it would just be inconsistent with how we've looked at the other developments.
Mr. Mayor. I see this the same way as Councilman Smith. Um, you know, we wanted to do consistency. We want Bel Air to remain a a, you know, beautiful city and uh I think that if we did the con- if we did the asphalt over concrete over the long term, it'll be the citizens of Bel Air who have to pay for the extra maintenance. The citizens of Bel Air who will be kind of picking up that tab. And uh so I think with the clear cost savings to the citizens, uh because this is only a 16% difference. I I'm I'm with Councilman Smith on this, that we stay consistent with the concrete. I know that's not good for developers, but I think every time that I've chosen concrete over asphalt, I kind of knew that wasn't good for the developers. Um, so I um I just think it's what's best for the city.
Mr. Mayor, I guess I got a question. Um, looking at the map that we have up there, um is the the road, the big U, U road that's immediately to the west of that current area we're talking about, is that that's all concrete road, right?
That's correct.
And so this would be the entire, all the roads and everything in the red box then?
That's correct.
Do we have any asphalt roads near this area or is everything concrete around it?
Well, Central Park Avenue is asphalt. That's the one that comes in right in front of it. But that was put in, what, 15 years ago, I think, something like that.
So is Rock Road asphalt. I think it's important that we honor the developer's request here because uh he is he is looking at some cost increases and uh those are are significant to him. Uh, I believe you rent these, is correct?
I'm sorry, what?
I believe you're renting these units. You're not selling the units.
No, we're not selling them.
So is it's a burden, it's a payment you're going to be making.
That's why I was saying, I look at the monthly payments on that stuff.
Alright, so um and so I'm I'm concerned if we go against the request of the developer. That's I don't think is a a good move for the city to do. I could consider that seriously.
So I guess again, Mr. Mayor, looking at the map, um it connects to the Central Park Road at the north and then it connects to Rock Road on the south end. Is that the only two connections to this swath? Does phase two and phase one connect together? Okay. Right.
And where does phase two connect to the main roads? Is it only off of Central Park?
Yeah, and there's a cul-de-sac at the bottom.
All of all the connections to Rock Road are cul-de-sacs. Is that correct?
Oh, so there's nothing on the south end? So the south end has no outlet onto Rock Road?
That's correct.
Okay.
So there's no through traffic?
Yeah, I uh, this is an interesting issue, like you said. Yeah, I guess just looking at, you know, the map and where it's at, how it's going to be, especially since it's not a through road at all. I uh, as you were talking, I certainly was sympathetic to what you were, what you're asking for and I this isn't an easy decision. I don't know, I guess uh just looking at the nature of the road where it is and the fact that it's not a through road. I certainly understand uh the concerns Councilman Schroder and Smith share. I was thinking along those lines too. But also trying to be sensitive to you coming into requests because we don't have very many many developers that actually come in and and ask us about this issue in particular, so I certainly appreciate that.
Yes. Two. I have no idea. Set me up with that one. Yeah, I I don't know what your traffic counts are and at what point that turns to.
Yeah, a lot of it.
Probably go to a three lane with a turning lane in the middle before it goes to a four lane.
Yep. Yeah.
And it's, you know, a lot of it's based on federal funding through WAMFO and stuff for major thoroughfare.
Right.
Yeah, it it'll be a while before that, any work can be really done on that as far as the reconstruction.
And if this is constructed in asphalt, it'll be an asphalt road connecting to another asphalt road. Mr. Mayor. I'm I'm certainly sympathetic to the economics of the the specials here, but uh I think the math on the, you know, the the total cost over the life of the surface. I I just can't go any other way than concrete on this. I'm going to go ahead and put a motion out there so that we can vote on it. I'm going to make a motion to accept the bid from Pearson for concrete paving at a cost not to exceed 484,831 dollars and 90 cents for phase two paving improvements to serve the Villas at Prestwick and authorize the mayor to sign.
All second.
A motion by Mr. Smith and a second by Dr. Schroeder. Any additional discussion?
Yeah, I'd like to put mine in. Uh, I'm sympathetic to the prices too, but this has been a bad year for everybody. All of our costs have gone up. I think you're extremely lucky. You're not paying $900,000 for this road. Okay, just to be honest, and I'm in favor of the concrete. I will move that way.
Any other discussion? There are none. I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Did you vote?
So you did not vote? How would you vote? You're not, you're going to abstain. Okay. Correct the vote count. Uh, vote is four, zero, one.
If I can just say, yeah, I'm good with that. I, you, we tried to look and we even met out here trying to say, you know, is this worth? Should we continue and even ask this? But when you just look at all these different costs and all these uncertainties and as a council, you guys have been great to work with and and so it was one of those things we said, hey, we gotta, you know, we have to look at the cost of stuff. And so uh, we're good with that.
Yeah, I also forgot to mention, I just didn't want to set a bad precedent here.
Moving on to item F, council has set a priority repairing and replacing streets. The most challenging piece outside of budgeting is identifying which roads need to be repaired and or replaced and when. So our 2021 capital improvement plan for streets includes money for a program that will evaluate all streets in Bel Air and create a priority prioritization list for which streets need repair and what and to what extent. So our city engineer Anne Stevens is here to explain how the program works, benefits, discuss, bids and issues.
So as the mayor said, we talked back in March about kind of the public works plan for this year. And one of those items, as the mayor said, was a comprehensive street evaluation with a GIS database. The street evaluation will go through and evaluate every single street in town and give it a rating of, we have been using the Pazer system, pavement surface evaluation and rating. It gives a one through 10 number on every street. Gravel streets are evaluated a little bit differently and that's a one through five rating. So the city, myself and my staff have gone through and rated the streets several times over the past six years. But this is a separate evaluation by an outside consultant that would assist us in not only validating our rating, but also coming up with a capital improvement plan moving forward to assist the city in making decisions on street improvements. Which streets, what improvements, and laying out that plan for the next five to 10 years for budgeting purposes. The other piece is a GIS component and the geographical information systems. It's going to be somewhat similar to what Sedgwick County has, but different, we won't have all the parcel information on ours and it won't be for public use just yet, but that's a portion that can be added on in the future. We do have several GIS components that we use internally. We have our water system on GIS. We have our sanitary sewer system on GIS. We are also working on getting our storm sewer system on GIS. And that is all just a, it helps our field staff go out and evaluate streets or evaluate not not streets, but the water system and we know where manholes are, we know where valves are, we know where fire hydrants are, so in the case of an emergency, we could use that information. Excuse me, to quickly evaluate where stuff is at. The street portion will be just a visual a gra- a visual representation of the report. It will be able to tell us if red for poor condition, yellow for okay condition and green for good condition. And just be, pictures are much easier to digest for a lot of people than a long report, so that's the reason for it. And I did submit three requests, one to Garver, one to PEC, one to MKEC. Garver respectfully declined. Their GIS system is much more involved than what we wanted and they did not feel that what their product is would suit our needs. So they respectfully declined to respond to the proposal. We did have the two responses from both MKEC and PEC. Both are very similar in scope. They will both provide a very similar product. MKEC is used to rating projects on a different index. It's called a pavement condition index. That is a one through 100 rating. It's very simple to take that one through 100 and reduce it to the one through 10 rating. PEC does both. But the one through 10 is what we have used. It's what we can use going forward. Pe- or both firms will help train staff and so staff can continue the ratings moving forward and just having that consistent set of ratings. So both firms are giving us what we want. Both developments are ver- are both products are very similar in scope. PEC did come in at 67,800 versus MKEC 70,000. We have demoed both products and I tend to like PECs a little bit more. It's just a little bit more in depth than the MKEC product, although MKEC is both is satisfactory as well.
So have you checked, and I know our friend, Mr. Smith, will ask this question probably, but have you checked with compatibility of our current infrastructure of networks?
Yes, it will, we will be able to transfer our stuff into the new system.
And um if I understand this system, is this system something that requires a a person to subjectively go out and look at the sit- streets all the time and then update the ratings in in this in the database? Is that what, the way this works?
Yes, and that is usually done, you can do it on an annual basis, but it's more typical on an every other year basis for the for the street ratings.
Just just curious, has anybody ever thought of doing a like a cycle count type of a thing where you you cycle through each road and do like certain roads each month and just work through it that way and maybe over a two-year period, you cover the entire city and?
You generally want to do as many as you can at the same time because if you if you sparse them out more kind of like you're suggesting, you don't have the same eye looking at it and so you can get a little bit different rating if you're going out at different times. And different times of the year, you see different things. Especially, usually I like to go out right after a rain or within a day or two after a rain because the cracks pop up and they're more visible than they are if it's if we've had a long dry spell.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
So as I'm thinking about this, um I I guess I'm concerned a little bit about the project overall. And the 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 spirit of that concern is that $70,000 is a lot of money and uh kind of our option is the way I see it is we can spend $70,000 doing a study to tell us what streets to go repair in what order and we maybe can perfectly repair the streets in the in the perfect order or maybe a a more perfect order because we won't get to perfect. Um, or we can take that $70,000 and actually apply it to doing street improvements and take a little bit of risk that we do the wrong ones in the wrong order. Uh, I guess my my concern is that we don't have so much in our street budget at this point, especially considering our wood lawn cost overruns that I feel like we have more money than we already kind of have a priority list of what to do with. And so I'm struggling to see kind of the value in moving this project along right now uh given kind of where we sit.
Well, I'd like to see this project move forward because I would like to see a list of the streets that need repaired and how much we think it's going to cost for each one so we could mix and match and bundle the money the money that we do have to fix the roads.
Mr. Mayor. Is this a one, this a one-time cost or is there's a fee or this is a yearly fee or?
So this is the, basically, it's both. So it, this is the fee for getting the roads evaluated and getting the GIS system set up. When we had PEC come and evaluate the gravel roads for us earlier this year, they did, they set up the gravel road GIS system. They, it for them, it was easier to set up the GIS system than to do anything else. It did not take them any more time to set that up than they would have to do a report and then it gives the graphics that are more easily digested from the or by the public. But there is some annual costs involved as far as website hosting, et cetera. And I believe those were included in the both proposals, but I can't. It's, I did not look at those today. Um, but the the initial costs are included in in the proposals. As far as further evaluations, that is something that both both firms are giving us and or the ability to hand enter those models or the information so our staff can go out and evaluate the roads and get that updated. If there was any significant updates, there would be fees for that because you would be asking them to come out and do an additional service.
Is one of these systems superior to the other in any way?
They're both very similar, but as I mentioned earlier, I do like the PEC system a little bit better. It's just a little bit more comprehensive than the MKEC system, but they're both fairly comparable.
And and you already have experience using the same similar system as PECs, right?
That is, we we don't have specific experience, but we do have GIS experience using a s- uh the GIS system that is both MKEC and PEC.
But not the rating of the roads?
Correct.
Okay.
Our our rating of roads is done in Excel. So it's it's a little bit antiquated, but in this, this would also give us the ability, as Mr. Mayor has had me put in several times, is kind of starting to develop that maintenance plan for many years into the future where we know we did certain roads this year and five to seven years are going to need it again. This, having the everything in GIS is going to make it much, much easier for both myself to and others to go through and see that plan. Instead, it's like way out in the XX column of the spreadsheet, which is not as easily transferred as some of those, as these capabilities.
Yeah, I also like that this would be available to our citizens.
That is correct.
So that they can look up their own road and see where they compare it to the rest of the city. So when I get somebody that tells me the road's terrible and I look at it and I can't see what's wrong with it, they can compare it and see theirs is a four maybe and somebody else's is a one and maybe understand why we're not doing anything to their road.
And that's what I really like about it is it gets some of the onus off of me and puts it on to somebody else and you can graphically see the condition of all the roads in the town and it's not just one person's word against another, you know, I I drive that road every day. You can't tell me it's in decent condition. I, this is what I'm seeing.
So one of the, you and you touched on it because I think one of the the things that that we struggle with as as the council's governing body is knowing what are the right budget numbers for road maintenance because we don't have that and and you know, you know, we've had that conversation a few times. And if this gets us, helps us get closer to that, I think that's a great tool for us because right now we we're nowhere near that. And then we would have an idea, you know, if if. And then we would have an idea, you know, if half a million dollars is enough to maintain the roads and, and we need to add a little more to, to upgrade some roads, then we would know what that is. Or if it's two million, but right now, we don't know where, where that is. So that's, that's, that's a concern to me and has been for some, some time.
Mr. Mayor. I'm empathetic to Councilman Smith's kind of like, hey, this is a chunk of money. Maybe we should just fix a road with it. But I, I do lean with like, you really need really good tools to do the job correctly. And I just, my understanding of this is this is a tool we need going out into the future. And sometimes when you buy a piece of software, some sort of tool, it feels painful. And then in the long run, you're like, you know, what in the world would I do without this? And this is something I feel like our staff feels would be valuable to them. And so I want to provide them the best tools to be able to do what they want. You know, may, maybe Councilman Smith's right. I'm, I'm not super sure, but I, I do tend to lean toward giving staff the best tools they can to be able to do a good job. That way, every once in a while, it keeps you from making a really big mistake that, that costs even more than maybe this number is. And maybe it will, maybe it won't. But I'm, I'm sort of leaning that way.
Mr. Mayor.
Elsa, Mr. Elsa.
Yeah. So when I first saw this, I, I was also thinking, well, Anne, what do you need this for? You, you know all the roads. But I think, I think Anne wouldn't bring this to us unless she thought it was really a valuable thing to, I think it will reduce burden off her shoulders because she is kind of the gatekeeper of what all the roads are. And if we were wondering what the status of one road is versus another, we'd be asking her. And an Excel spreadsheet can be a valuable tool, but this looks like something that goes well beyond that. I, I do especially like the idea, I guess I didn't have that understanding initially until you talked about it, that the citizens would be able to go on here and look and see a, some type of, I guess it would be a visual graphic type of-
Correct. Yeah, it would not be an immediate thing that the citizens could go on and use, but it's an add-on feature that I would like to add into the future. I want to make sure that we can get this up and running and using. And we can always take screenshots and snap graphics out of it for use for the public.
Okay.
But for them to actually go in and see information, that would be something that would come in, in future years. I want to make sure that it's getting in, getting used, getting the information in there, the maintenance history to the best of our ability and have that information available for the public. So it's not a just yet, but it is, both systems are available to do that into the future.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, this is probably a tough question for Anne, but I, I also think if you have a really good organized system of how you're doing things, when Anne gets her $20 million a year job somewhere else and, and goes away, how, how easy is it to transfer it on to the next person? And if we're talking about the special Excel spreadsheet that's on Anne's computer that the next person has to go in and figure out what in the world she meant, I think that could be slightly problematic, whereas this is a very organized way to keep things. That sounds like it's an industry standard that what you or anybody else would use, everyone would know what it was and it'd be easy to be able to use amongst people. I, I think that's, feels like another valuable aspect of this tool.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Smith.
Do we know or have an approximate estimate of what the cost is, one, for the maintenance and update of this in future years? And two, for enabling the, you know, the citizen self-service to this model?
The citizen self-service, I know that was, PEC had included that specifically in theirs. And I believe it was five to 10,000 for that citizen self-service. It would also, we would also need to do some improvements and kind of, I'm going to use the word finagling because I'm not a website person, but we would need to do a little bit of changes on our end to be able to allow that and allow the space for it. Whether it's linking to PEC's database, that I'm not fluent in that, in that sphere, so I can't speak too much to it.
Yeah. Are they hosting this in their GIS instance then?
It's hosted on the cloud. So yes, I, I'm not a computer person. I turn it on and it works.
We're not going to go like subscribe to ArcGIS ourselves. We're going to leverage somebody else's subscription.
Correct. We do have ArcGIS subscriptions ourselves.
Okay.
And so we will work with those to get everything the way it needs to be.
Okay. And then on the, the second part of the cost to keep this updated, once we, once we do it once?
It was the cost. I don't recall seeing a cost in here, but I do, I do remember when I was talking to PEC, they said it was fairly, the ongoing maintenance, the yearly maintenance was fairly minimal. And I believe it was under a thousand dollars a year.
Okay.
But if, if there was any desire to have PEC come out and re-rate the roads, that would be a different, obviously a higher cost. And that is something that staff can do. I think, in my opinion, it is very valuable to have a professional do it, maybe on an every five-year basis or every seven-year basis. And staff can do it in the meantime just to keep up. And then both firms would, would train staff in the way they're doing it. And we've, we've gone through and, and rated roads. There's, the manuals have pictures. So it's fairly clear on what is what, but they have the experience of rating a numerous amount of roads where we just have our city.
And then finally, there's been some discussion about a desired outcome here. Is that suggested budgetary figure for maintenance? Is that an outcome that is part of the PEC deliverable?
Don't, didn't quite understand your question. I apologize.
Yeah. So we write PEC a check for $67,800. Part of what they deliver is that recommended budgetary number to us for maintenance. I just want to make sure that is actually deliverable. I don't recall seeing that listed as a deliverable. So I just want to make sure that that's something that we're going to get.
Sure. I can, I can definitely work with them to get that number for you.
Okay.
So, so just, just so you know, on page 76 of the packet, item four says, based on assessment of collected data, PEC will develop prioritized recommendations for a 10-year street maintenance plan.
Which could mean just an order of listed streets, or it could include dollars. I'm guessing it doesn't include dollars, but-
Right. Yeah.
So the-
I could get it, yeah.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. So on page 91, looks like in the scope of we're heading, the final bullet point says that the findings to city council with paper reports summarizing street conditions and detailing prioritized 10-year maintenance plan with, with opinions of cost. So I don't, that might address it.
I think it, it may. Great.
Well, as we all know, those costs will change drastically from week to week.
Yeah. Well, I think I've probably been convinced that this, well, I know that this is a valuable thing to do. The thing that I was originally questioning was the timing, you know, the timing of, does it make sense to do this this year or two years from now? I think I'm, I'm convinced that we probably should do this. But if we are going to do it, I, I hesitate to exclude that, that citizen self-service option from the scope here. That seems like one of the most valuable things for, for our citizens is to be able to kind of, be able to see the results of this study, to be able to interact with it and to use that as they provide us feedback and concerns. Is there a reason we couldn't include that in the scope at this point?
No, we can certainly include that in the scope. My only kind of hesitation was I wanted to make sure that our staff is familiar with, with using the module and getting it updated and making sure that we're just intimately familiar with it. So when we do receive questions, we're able to accurately respond to those and make sure that I work with our communications department and website, Tristan, to make sure that we are able to, I, I don't know the right word, but I guess it's host, and make sure that that space is available on our website.
I'd like to hold off on making it available to the public just because you need some time to get familiar with it. Make sure everything's integrated. So six, eight months, maybe a year from now, we could add that.
I think that makes more, a lot of sense to me because anytime you develop a, a new website, whatever, you got to have a period of testing and making sure that it's right. And, and this is no different. You, our staff is going to have to have a period of time of testing, make sure that they know what it's doing and what it's not doing. So that when they get those questions, because they will get those questions, they can actually answer them halfway and tell us immediately, right?
Mr. Mayor, I, I agree, you know, it sounds like looking at this down the line isn't necessity. And I guess I just want to kind of echo Councilman Smith that let's not, whatever, wherever we got to write this down, to make sure that the, this feature gets added on when we're ready. We want to make sure it happens. And I understand why the first day we get the software, it's not going to happen. But after that, when you, you know, once we're ready, we don't want this just to slide by. Because I do think, I do agree, this is a valuable thing, aspect of this, this tool that we're getting.
Yeah, I guess if we included it in the scope, it wouldn't have necessarily been my expectation that it was turned on day one and that we would still follow typical software QA, QC, and training practices. I just, to, to Councilmember Schröder's comment, I don't want it to be forgotten because I think that's going to be really valuable here. And if we're spending the $70,000 to get the data and it only costs a couple more to let the public interact with it, I, I really want to make sure that gets done.
I want to make sure it gets done too, but I don't think anybody's going to let us forget. Anne won't let us forget. The public won't let us forget.
That's probably true.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor, I think we've talked this to death and I'd like to make a motion to accept a proposal from PEC in the amount not to exceed $67,800 for the comprehensive street evaluation with the GIS database and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
Motion by Mr. Wilson, second by Dr. Schröder. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for vote. All favors say aye.
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 Pose, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item G, consider a government total services agreement with Sedgwick County for animal control service and enforcement. This is something we've been waiting for a long time. So I'm really glad to see this finally come to the agenda. So currently, the city has a two-part system dealing with animals. Police try to handle what they can and then call animal control for additional help when needed. The result is an inefficient system that lacks in public service and staff. So suggest turning over animal control entirely to Sedgwick County and the council agree. On the agenda is an inter-legal, inter-local agreement that will make this happen. So the city attorney, Jackie Kelly, is here to explain the agreement and answer questions. Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor. And yes, this is the agreement that we came to terms with. I'm not sure if you received my staff report, but I'll just reiterate some of the, the notes that I put in there. That initially, the county was, one of the holdups was the county wanted to make sure that they can make a provision for our exotic pet store. And they had to have their animal care board review that item, the health department review that item, and then work through some mutual agreements that we wanted, such as you guys were pretty concerned about making sure that quality control or quality responsiveness was a part of this agreement. So we worked in all those issues and county was able to bring their best approved agreement to the table last month. At this phase, if the city is comfortable, I do believe it does have the amendments that council wanted. This would go to the county commissioners at the beginning of November. And then we would repeal certain portions of our ordinance to make sure that it's consistent with the county ordinance. And then the, the animal, then the county would be responsible for animal control. So the agreement is one step. There'd be two more steps that we'd need to take before it, it was actually finalized. Yes, ma'am.
Has anyone been here on the estimate of response time?
No, not recently. I think we may have talked about response time when we had the workshop back in March or February. Exactly. And I, I don't either, but I do know that, I mean, what we have now is if, even if the response is quick, it's not, like, we're not able to accommodate. So if the response is a little slower, that, even though the response might be a little slower, the county can accommodate some of those more unique animal control situations, if that's helpful.
I'm infamous for that incident. I killed a raccoon, a rabid raccoon, in my front yard. Several neighbors watching. I was not about to stand there and watch him. Middle of the way in one avenue. Now that's the country girl in me and my neighbor, too. And fortunately, my neighbor picked up the bloody stuff that was left and crushed it. But that was an incident that if I had not been there and, and willing, I guess, to take that on, you know, the children across the way from me at that point, children hiding me. And I want to go walk around with that stupid thing, you know, find items with it type of thing. So it concerns me. It does concern me.
Yeah.
And we're still a little bit old.
So, yeah, I, I don't, I can, we can table this and I can find out more about specific response times. I, I just don't have that specific information right in front of me now. But, yeah. I, I do think it would be within a reasonable time period, but maybe that's more than the council's comfortable with.
Well, I guess I wasn't very comfortable, you know, with my situation and knowing it because of my background. I wasn't very comfortable with that.
So-
Everybody was going, no.
Sure. So what was, what is the current scenario if, if an animal is discovered like Ms. Lynn has just described, a rabid animal? The current scenario is we call the police. The police can't deal with it. They need to call animal control and animal control still comes out to take care of the animal. Is that correct?
Not in most cases. Animal control will provide traps and provide residents with the equipment to take care of the animal and then pick it up and deliver it to wherever it needs to go. So the animal control, the actual service is not always fully comprehensive. Now, a resident could call, could directly call animal control and can, animal control come out and be responsible for picking it up, disposing it, or assisting with it.
Currently?
No, I'm saying, once the agreement is in place.
I was going to say, because citizens are not able to do that right now.
Correct. Right. And that's the issue. Exactly.
Right. Okay.
I guess another component that comes to mind, that's pretty much a big change, is right now, Bel Air residents are supposed to pay licensing fees to the city of Bel Air. A lot of people end up paying their animal licensing fees to the county mistakenly. Oh, I'm sorry, we don't have fees. That's right. We've removed fees. So any fees would be due to Bel Air. Those are removed. Going forward, person who has an animal would have to pay licensing fees to the county. So that's an important feature that allows us to, to be able to have animal control through the county. They collect licensing fees, they, they handle prosecutions, they handle the whole animal situation.
Right now, are they exempt from those licensing fees with the county?
Right, because we have our own city ordinance on them.
So they would have to pay those licensing fees to the county? And, and what animals does that apply to? Just dogs or other animals? Does it apply to other animals?
My understanding is certainly dogs. I'm not sure it applies to other animals. It's, I can get you more information. The plan was to do a campaign educating the public on the new standards through the county code as it became, as it became applicable.
If I remember right from our original meeting on this, the only animals that will be licensed are dogs. They don't license cats because I remember distinctly asking that question. I also know that what, the biggest thing I had against this agreement was that it doesn't gain us coverage. It's pretty much eight to five, Monday through Friday. Nobody's available evenings or weekends unless it's some extraordinary circumstance, and then they'll come out in a few hours.
Let me go to your question.
And, and that's the part I would hope we could fix by getting somebody else to take care of this for us, is more coverage. Because- take care of this for us is more coverage. Because, you know, a lot of our residents are working eight to five. They don't know there's a dog running the neighborhood all day. They get home at six o'clock and there's some dog digging through their trash and they call and there's nobody to take care of the problem.
So, I'm sorry, let me clarify. You're saying your concern is, as of, as of now, our officers only come out between eight and five? Or you're saying under the new agreement?
The animal control people were eight to five, Monday through Friday.
Unless there's an extenuating circumstance.
Unless there's something special.
Right. Exactly.
Here it gets hit by a car or something like that.
Right. Right.
But if it's just a loose dog, they're going to tell you, I call back on Monday.
Okay.
So is that what this future state would look like or is that current, just current state?
That would be the future state from my understanding. We would comply with whatever the, the current animal control office hours are. There wouldn't be any new staff or any special provisions. We'd just come under their current provisions.
Which is what the rest of the county lives by.
Right. Exactly.
Mr. Mayor, I, I can understand how this doesn't solve every problem, but my recollection of that whole conversation, I felt like this was a step forward and, and more beneficial than we, what we have now. And I realize they won't come out any time during the day, but we don't have any agreement with them now. So unless there's an option that'll take us a bigger step forward than this one, I, I think I'm in generally in favor of it from my understanding of that long ago meeting.
I think the biggest benefit of this was that it freed up our police department. They didn't have to take care of animals anymore.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
I have a similar recollection. I remember kind of being unhappy with the service level commitments that, that we were hearing about at the workshop, but recognizing that it, it probably was a little bit better than what we have today. I, I guess the only question that I have is really around the exotic animals because we did revise our code to make sure that the exotic pets business here in Bel Air could operate and they could have their educational displays. And we amended our code with some very strict requirements to allow that so that we were confident in them being able to safely do so. Are, are they comfortable with the, so my understanding is we're going to drop that part of our ordinances and they won't have that protection under our code, but they will under the Cedric County code because Cedric County is amending theirs. Are they comfortable with the changes that Cedric County is making?
Yes. Cedric County has allowed them to keep everything in place that they currently have.
And we've talked to them?
Yes. They were inspected. They were invited into the process and reviewed. So yes, they're, they're comfortable with being able to maintain the status quo as of now.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I'll motion to approve a government services agreement for animal control service enforcement by and between the city of Bel Air, Kansas, Cedric County, Kansas and authorize the mayor to sign.
I'll second.
I've motioned for Dr. Schroder and a second by Mr. Smith. Any additional discussion?
Did you want to say something, Joe?
Oh, so no one wants to open up an elected position for dog catcher for our city?
Are you volunteering? Are you going to run?
What tool did you use?
I don't think you want to know.
I started with a hoe. That wasn't working very well. I got the rake.
Multiple function.
Okay. Any other relevant discussion?
I would just reiterate that this step allows us to move forward and have the Board of County Commissioners approve this hopefully at their next meeting. And then from there, I'll be bringing back language to repeal sections of our animal control code. And then after that, it will be effective and we'll start getting information out to the public. So there's a little bit more to do.
Thank you. Hearing no additional discussion, I'll call for vote. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Item H, the developer of two lots in Sunflower Commerce Park requested a vacation of access control along Webb Road for a drive. The planning commission heard the request at their meeting last week and voted five to zero to approve the vacation. City staff are available to answer questions. So can we get an explanation of what the, what exactly they're wanting to do here?
So typically, when, when we do developments along major thoroughfares such as Webb, we put a access control. So that means that every lot owner along there can't just put a road in because, you know, that's a traffic congestion concern and things like that. So that's what, that's what was there. And the, the purchaser of a couple lots that are basically in the middle of the mile between, or it's not quite a mile, but between the two roads, which would be 53rd and I think it's 49th, something like that. He requested to have one access to be able to get into his two lots there. And so staff looked at, okay, what's the distance between the, the stop signs at 53rd and 49th? And is that appropriate to have one in there? And that was what was, took to the planning commission. They have voted to approve that. So that's what you're doing is basically that area between those two streets allowing an, an entrance off of Webb.
So we just asked it for one access, not two?
There was actually two.
Two green spots.
Yeah.
On that map. Lines on the map. Those would be where the entrances.
Yeah. So there, yeah, there's actually two. And, but the distance between, from the north one to 53rd and then the south one to 49th did not appear to have a problem with traffic.
Do we have any issue here with semis being able to access those buildings? Because I'm sure they will.
So that, that was an issue was with the size of them, but, but what, you can see it, the way it lays out, that they actually, you can actually go through to Toler, which is behind it. And so their idea was that, you know, I don't remember which road, but well, well, actually it's the south one there. Will, they'll be able to come in and then go through, through Toler. And so they don't always have to use Webb Road.
So Toler is east of this, right?
Yeah. So you can see Toler Drive there to the east.
Okay. I can't quite read it, but.
Yeah. So that's, and that's a street. A lot of the development actually enters and exits off of Toler. So they're actually going to be able to go through it, which will help with traffic flow as well. And as you said, the semis.
And does our city engineer agree that those two driveways are far enough apart from each other not to cause a problem?
She's here, so.
Yeah, I know. That's why I asked.
At the present time, with the traffic loads, they should not cause an issue with the location of the driveways. And that was a point of discussion at Planning Commission and it was decided that in the future, if it is needed to put a right turn lane in, we could do that.
Okay. What about left turns coming south?
Yes. That would need a little bit more engineering work, but we could, we could make concessions and alternatives to help that out.
Okay. As long as you're happy.
Yeah, that was my observation as well, was that those seem really close together for a main road, but it's hard to get scale on that picture.
Yeah.
There's approximately 170 feet between the two entrances, which is not a lot, but it, it should be enough that we should not see traffic balling up with those two entrances. If the council is concerned, I would definitely recommend keeping that central access between the four buildings. If council wished to deny the vacation request to the north one, I would be okay with that. But I do believe that they should be, they, they seem to be fine without, you know, traffic studies and going into this very deeply. And specifically, it's hard to come to a specific recommendation, but it, it is far enough apart that I believe it should be okay.
There is no road between lot two and lot three. Is that correct?
That is correct. The north entrance was, is supposed to serve both lots two and lot three.
Would it be a good idea to make no left turns out of that north driveway?
That would probably, that would be a good concession. And that is another thing that Planning Commission talked about was if there is issues in the future, possibly limiting movements out of those driveways.
So we can revisit it in the future if we start having problems?
That is correct. And I would ask our city attorney to.
Yeah. I, you, the vacating, the, is just removing our right to access that. So that way it can be used for a driveway. We don't want to address those signage issues in this matter, but we certainly can take it up on a separate item, as a separate item.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Smith.
Is it within the scope of the council's purview to restrict turns out of the private drive?
Within your typical discussions with your engineer, based off of traffic and flow and safety, you can restrict access to certain drives. I would do it under the consultation of your engineer based on some factual information.
So eyelids are for. I'm just kidding about that. I'm really serious about it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Schroder.
I usually trust our planning commission. I think we have some good people on that and I appreciate the discussion, but I think I'm ready to go ahead and move forward. So I'll motion to approve an order vacating a portion of an access control on certain property location within the corporate city limits of the city of Bel Air, Kansas and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Schroder and a second by Mr. Welch. This is a roll call vote. Mr. City clerk, would you please call a roll? Yes.
Mr. Deppelsohn.
Aye.
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 Motion carries six to zero. I had to make executive session. I have no need for an executive, executive session. Does anyone else? Hearing none, we'll move on to item 14, discussion of future issues. Anyone have any other issues or items to discuss? All right, group tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Welch and a second by Ms. Nguyen. I think I had two seconds, but I'll take Ms. Nguyen's. Think I'll call for a vote. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. We are adjourned. Let's take five minutes for a break and then we'll go to the land bank. Let's make it nine o'clock.
Yeah, that works. A little sharp, a little, little easier to manage.